Makes us feel so important. Are we recording the excellent? Good morning, everybody. Welcome to B County Commissioners' Court. This is our regular term meeting. Today is Monday, June tenth, twenty twenty-four. The time is nine A.M. We're physically located in the B County Courthouse, Commissioners' Courtroom, number one-ten, one-oh-five west, Corpus Christi Street, Beville, Texas, seven-eight-one-oh-two. If you are here this morning for jury duty, you are in the wrong room. You need to go to the second courtroom on the second floor, or the big courtroom on the second floor. And don't be late there. That was the call to order. Would everybody please stand and join us. Father Andrew Green, Adrian Carrer. Thank you for being here this morning.
Absolutely. It's my honor. Let's pray. God of love, we give you thanks for this day. We give you thanks for the blessings you've bestowed upon us. We give you thanks for B County and the people who call this community home. Be with us this morning as we do the work you've placed before us. Guide the hearts and minds of those who have been chosen to represent many. May they always be listening for the Spirit who speaks of truth and justice. And Lord, if it be thy will, send us rain to bring forth the fruits of the earth. Above all, may your will be done and may your love show forth in this place. We ask this in Jesus Christ's holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state. Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Oh, there's a little hit that went there on my car. But otherwise, he was gonna throw us off. Peter, fuck me. I wouldn't try to throw y'all off. It's my own mind throwing myself off for fun.
Good morning. Chief of visiting.
I can tell there's a little buzz at each other's base. Uh, we're at agenda item number four, recognition of visitors. We have a lot of visitors in the room today. Folks, there's no obligation or compunction that you identify yourself. If you'd like to make a public comment, that time will come at a different agenda item. And if you're here on a specific agenda item, then just hang tight and we'll be calling your agenda item in a few moments. But if there's anybody that isn't on the agenda or is, uh, doesn't want to make a public comment but would like to identify themselves for the record, now is the time. Otherwise, thank you all for being here. Please come again soon. Moving on to agenda item number five, Commissioners' Court, opening remarks. Commissioner, let me get on the floor, sir.
Thank you. I want to thank Road and Bridge first of all. We, uh, we had three different people out in Blueberry Hill that got culverts installed that were needed. So, thank you guys for doing that. Uh, I know I have a lot of people that call me and ask, you know, what's the process? And do we have to pay for it? All that good stuff. And let people know that the landowner will purchase the culvert. And one particular person, uh, he had no means of picking it up. So, if he goes to McCoys and purchases it, Road and Bridge will go by there, pick it up for you, and then take this location. And they will do all the labor at no charge. So, they got the, uh, three people out in Blueberry Hill taken care of. And also, uh, there was a spot at an address off of Beagle Road that was really bad going off of Beagle to the entrance of the property. Got that taken care of. So, thank you guys for all that. Um, I got several cleanups planned up here in the future, in the very near future, to do. And, uh, also attended the fundraiser for the Boys and Girls Club. That was a success. I think just on the, just on the life auction stuff, they raised almost ten thousand dollars. So, and then there was quite a few of the sound auction items that everybody sold from the court hill. But it was, it was good. Very, very successful. So, with that, I will pass my life. Thanks, sir. I appreciate it. Uh, several things. For those of you that have potholes, unfortunately, those potholes are gonna have to stay potholes for a little while. Road and Bridge is unable to get the hot mix. It's all being bought up by the big companies right now. We've got some potholes in North Peak County. I had a call on my phone this morning. They said they came out about a week ago and put a big circle around it, but hadn't fixed it yet. I said, yes, sir, I've checked on that. Can't get the hot mix right now. So, we've got the money, we've got the will, but we can't get the material. So, we're getting it as quick as we can. We'll get those roads fixed as quick as we can. Uh, there's gonna be a ribbon cutting north of Mineral tomorrow for millions of solar panels. Orsted has got a smaller section for a few films. And they're gonna have ribbon cutting and officially flip the switch, if you will, on those solar panels. Attended a mineral meeting on, uh, a couple Saturdays ago. Uh, lots of questions, lots of good questions. Keeping everybody up to date. Shout out to Road and Bridge. Uh, we had some high winds in North Peak County all about a week or so ago. Had some limbs and trees down. They, uh, if you look, Johnny on the spot got out there and cleaned them up and, uh, got things going again. We're gonna be talking about hurricane season, but, uh, our emergency management folks, uh, when we get to public comment, are gonna give y'all some details. But be aware, hurricane season has started. So, with that note, Judge, I will pass my life.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Farias, sir.
Uh, this past couple of weeks, uh, one call on Charcoal Road. Lady was trying to find out what they could do with straight dogs. He jumped at the end of Charcoal Road, so I kinda filtered in on what could and couldn't be done. So, I'll give her that information. We have the, uh, the lights are finally on at the Blanconia Fire Station, the new fire station that's out there. We finally got lights that work in there. Uh, I got pictures of them that they're on at night. They're gonna start, uh, putting the logos up and doing some little tiny work inside. So, uh, that's moving along. That's, for some of y'all that don't know, that was his hurricane party. That's been a long time coming, so. Um, let me see. Uh, working on the sidewalks here on the west end of the courthouse and also a cover for the water over here by the jet that was, uh, told to us by Mr. Garza and TAC to get it repaired up or fixed up for safety.
It looks bright and red?
No, bright and red.
What does it lead to?
No, there's some valves. There's some water. The control of water. And you can do the courthouse and everything else. So, but for safety, there, the little frame that was around there's gotta be redone and everything else. It was too low to the ground, rodded out, so.
Excellent.
Uh, also working on the Community Affairs Building. Got something to go out there Thursday. We should have a bid on some roof, uh, that's gonna be put up there. And hopefully that'll take care of the water leakage in that building that's been going on forever. Thank you, sir. John's working on the electrical because the electrical is extremely old in that building and he's got some bids for it already. And, uh, this week I have a BDA meeting this afternoon. And, uh, Texas, uh, the TC DRS, our retirement system. I have a conference this week that I'm gonna go to. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Commissioners, Judge, and Auditor, the group I'm gonna talk about here in a minute, I just can't say enough about these individuals that volunteer their services to our county. And the people I'm talking about is the volunteer fire departments, Beville, Skidmore, Tynan, Appleodee, Texas Forestry, Emergency Management, EMS, Sheriff's Office, DPS. All of them displays a total team effort when they respond to our incidents. To give an example, we had two major incidents that occurred at one-eight-one and three-fifty-nine bypass. We had several grass fires, County Road six-oh-three and a couple on one-eight-one in South of Skidmore. These incidents, when they occur, it's usually a surprise to everyone, but I wanna make an important note here that some, uh, we had one of these incidents that resulted in, in four injuries, five injuries, I'm sorry, and two were required medevac transport. These two individuals, just wanted to note, Brian Trevino of our Sheriff's Department and our Emergency Management, Rob Reyes, conducted rescue operations, putting our own life at risk and when there was a vehicle that was in a compromised position. So, these individuals, uh, should be recognized for their heroic efforts. And while it may seem like it's a daily thing, there are only two of many that are part of the volunteers that continue to do this. So, great, great, great effort. Extremely thankful for their hard work and services. Also, I'd like to recognize the sheriff deputies that are continuing to work hard in South Peak County to make traffic stops and to make our community just a little bit safer by having drivers slow down. Even though we have speed limit signs, they still buzzing through there like, you know, the ginseng. So, uh, kinda a little bit of general information. Uh, working closely with text on to enhance our county roads to help mitigate some of these actions that were happening at these intersections. And as Commissioners, you educated me. Getting stuff done through government does take time. And it's, studies are being done, but it's, it's, it's hard. And I come from a little bit different environment and just, we're gonna get there. Uh, probation, uh, our juvenile probation office, thanks to John Izagui, for coordinating and executing some repairs on the floor, uh, which are nearly complete. But we're getting some additional cost estimates to, uh, fix or replace the existing air-conditioned unit. We're having some challenges there. And also modify the parking lot. On the EOC building, uh, I'd like to recognize Jen Reyna. She facilitated an onsite meeting with some key stakeholders to review the placement of our data drops, placement of electrical outlets, and placement of some glass boards that are actually gonna facilitate meetings. Our electrical inspections have been completed. We're currently installing our AC duct and plumbing. So, work is really, really moving along here. Our drywall is actually on location. However, we're gonna wait a few weeks before we actually start installing. We wanna make sure everything behind the walls is what it needs to be before we close up the wall. So, that's a, that's a good problem. Uh, we're also waiting on some quotes to move the maintenance building from the existing location to new location. And then we could have some updates with the parking lot. Jen, you wanna give us a brief update on the parking lot?
Uh, yes, sir. The, um, parking lot is gonna be concrete around the EOC building. And we're gonna have, uh, some of the sidewalk extended from the building itself to have a better walkway around it.
Thank you. So, are the areas that, uh, that are ongoing right now? Currently working with, uh, two committees. One is the salary, one is the insurance committee. Great team. We're moving forward. We're doing the right thing for the people that we represent. So, glad to be part of those team. Also, I'm, uh, conducting reviews of some of the other county specification guidelines. Uh, identified, uh, several of them that are probably requiring a little bit of an update. It's been about twenty years, Judge, since they were taken. I'm sure a few things have changed in the past twenty years. So, anyhow, taking a look at it, I'll, you know, provide some of the findings there. Hopefully, we can get those updated. Also, uh, I'm a little bit behind on one of my action items here. I'm starting to study the guidelines here on our procurement and contractor selection, uh, selection guidelines. In Skidmore, several things are going on. Commissioner, thank you for allowing me some of your time. So, I appreciate it. Uh, in Skidmore, uh, at the JP's office, uh, there's some work that's ongoing there that's been approved. Thank you, Judge. Uh, so we have some mini splits that are actually going in today. So, the work just started. Uh, we're also getting some quotes to replace the old windows and the back doors. So, once those quote gets in, we'll follow the proper process to improve them. Also, we wanna thank the individuals for paying their fines by doing community service. And we're gonna leverage some of those resources to help paint the building and do some other things. One of the key learnings in that whole process, when individuals, whether you've been on your location or going out to get quotes or bids, try to understand what that process is. They eliminate, you know, putting the county in an awkward position, especially when you start talking to contractors and make some potential preliminary. It's not a good thing to do. So, just make sure we have the right people involved, get the auditor's office involved when, uh, when so less than some of these cases. Uh, attended the, uh, graduation sound onus for the Skidmore High School. Great presentation, things went well. Uh, Rose and Bridge quickly responded to that wind and went through North Peak County and eventually worked his way down to South Peak County. Had several trees that were knocked down. So, the roads, uh, Bridge picked those trees up quickly. Also, uh, they're continuing to make road preparation to seal code the roads there in South Peak County. So, and so, we're then down in Tynan, uh, attended a fire training conducted by Dave, Dave Gray Training. Also, currently working very closely with Ben Ramirez, I'm getting some cost estimates from AP to identify lights that are badly needed in the area to help improve the safety of the community. With that, Judge, I'll pass it on.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, I'll keep my comments brief. Somebody do it all the time.
Actor Green?
No, I love hearing it. Uh, and I appreciate everything. And I know the community appreciates everything. All four of our Commissioners do for them every day. Uh, but briefly, I'd like to give a big congratulations, Commissioner Farias, uh, on your recent election. Um, also, and you really downplayed it, uh, which is odd for a politician. But you're more than a politician, but you do wear that hat at times. But are you not the, are you the current president of the, of this convention that's happening?
Yes, South Pecos, Judge.
He's going to a convention that he's running. So, thank you for undertaking that leadership position and, and thank you for making B County look good. Uh, is everybody going? Nope?
You're the commission.
Yeah. It's a lot of work. They learn a lot. They don't have a lot of fun. But just to torture Commissioners and the county judges that do it in, uh, they, they do it in paradise down in South Padre Island, right? So, the beach is right there. But I assure you, they're in the convention rooms learning about municipal and, and county government.
Getting our house.
Right. Get your hours. Yeah, they'll be there. Um, anyway, we're in the middle. The county's in the middle, the early middle stages of budget process. Uh, Ms. April and her team are doing a great job. Uh, if any of our elected officials or department heads have any last-minute things that have popped up. Uh, guys, now, ladies and gentlemen, guys, uh, I don't wanna be misogynistic. Uh, now is the time, though, to reach out to our Auditor's Office or reach out to my office so we can discuss that and see if there's any possibility that we can get projects done this summer before, uh, this budget year ends. So, moving on to agenda item number six, public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to address Commissioners' Court at this time? Moving on to agenda.
Sorry, I was gonna.
That was very late. You're lucky Commissioner DeWitt had your back.
I'm telling you.
You have the floor, sir. Identify yourself, right?
My name is Ryan Garza. I'm the Emergency Manager for B County and the City of Beville. Uh, just wanted to cover a few things. Like Commissioner DeWitt said earlier, we are in hurricane season. Um, it started on the first. They're expecting a very busy and active season. Hopefully, we can, uh, skirt having anything get us directly. But just please prepare for it. Ways to prepare, um, just to stay in, stay in the know of what's going on. B County has several different platforms that we utilize to get the message out to people. We have a Facebook page. It's B-E-E-O-B-M. And then we also have the B County Public Information App. And we also have the emergency notification system that you can find a link to on our county webpage. Um, we try to update folks as soon as we start getting information, start pushing it out to the communities so that we all are aware of what's coming or what possibilities are. Um, one of the most scarce commodity during a hurricane is fuel. So, make sure that you're staying fueled up. You have all your stuff geared and ready to go if you do have to evacuate for anything. Uh, not just for, uh, for anything. Just also, kind of a, on Commissioner Odegaard's platform of our volunteer departments. B County has eight volunteer fire departments. Stuff to think about. They are very, they're stretched very thin, especially during the day. Fires or emergencies happen. A lot of folks can't just leave work to go and help their neighbors. But some people are using their own time to do so. So, just keep that in mind when you hear those sirens coming or you see those firemen, you know, a thank you for what they do. So, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Grovan. But I think that it's supposed to rain right now. But if it doesn't, nothing's gonna work.
My next official support, we're talking about it.
I, I really thought you were going to say it's always a good idea to head to your grocery store and buy as much toilet paper as possible. This is gonna be an economic boom for each of you in Walmart. But, uh, okay. Is there anybody else? Yes, sir?
Just, I just wanted to add. I think I might've missed something here. I just wanna recognize the efforts of Ryan Trevino and Rob Reyes. I don't know if I mentioned.
You did.
You did a couple times. But I missed them.
No, that's not right. Yes. Yes, ma'am?
Did y'all meet our man?
I've got you on the agenda. Yes, ma'am. Uh, moving on. Anybody else before I move on? Okay, moving on, agenda item number seven. The following items are of an administrative nature. Commissioners' Court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a Commissioner or county judge. I have a motion to approve. I have a second from Commissioner Link. Is there any further discussion? Here you're not. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Discuss and consider action on the following items. Agenda item number eight, approved use of funding from the Salary Assistance Senate Bill twenty-twenty, or twenty-two grant program for the county attorney's office. Mr. Knight? You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Aaron. Uh, if you can get past all the top drop errors in that very short memo, uh, in my defense side, we're in a rush and I despise top drop errors. In a nutshell, basically, we're creating a new position in the county court, in county attorney's office, basically, at a multi-county court administrative legal system. Because we're transitioning from a constitutional county judge and all of his, all of his responsibilities to a dedicated judge who basically has no other responsibility other than to hear cases. So, that's increasing our docket, uh, both, uh, in number of days in court and should be accelerating our trial dockets as well. Because we are the only county that's taking advantage of the, uh, the multi-county court hall at this time. Uh, Mac Malone has opted out. Well, no, actually, Your Honor, I, I commend you for doing it because I think it's the right call. I'm surprised, you know, the county. I have a reason, I, I understand why they're not doing it. It's, uh, anywhere down there.
We just like, we like our, our multi-county court law judge here. That's, so, take full advantage of him. Please, sir.
But anyway, this would be a new staff position and, uh, we're asking this position to start off at sixty-seven-five. I would note that that's what the, uh, our actual Judge Hardwood's new county court, multi-county court legal assistant salary is supposed to be as well. And this would be in compliance with SB twenty-two requirements, uh, Your Honor. Unfortunately, uh, there's been quite a bit of discussion from the comptroller's office regarding the, uh, the funding of positions. And that was a great help in, in dealing with this. Most of it comes from the, you know, the sheriff's office. However, uh, basically, the, the same process or the same argument by analogy is at work here. So, that's what we're here asking. Well, actually, I'm kinda grateful. I can spend as much time as I want to, but I'm supposed to be in a mediation right now. And I've got a separate mediation this afternoon. But of course, my department has a ridiculous position and, and I hope they get beat up quite a bit before I get there. So, maybe I won't seem like such a bad guy.
Mr. Knight, do you want us to, uh, uh, put this agenda item on hold and we can take it up at the end of the meeting?
Well, that's possible, Your Honor, but, uh, but duty does call.
I understand.
And I, I wouldn't like to make a, we're not on the agenda for this today. Uh, we had, uh, we closed the, um, the position of Assistant County Attorney. We had two attorneys for that position. Uh, they were considered both very seriously. One, one that complained often, and one didn't. Uh, so, subject to whatever, our new Assistant County Attorney will be Michael George in court.
Excellent.
Fine attorney, over thirty years of experience into the job. And fortunately, because he's not associated with trial that does not have the conflict. So, the other, the other attorney was Emily Martinez, a very qualified attorney, a very active attorney. However, since she is works for trial and is true to connect with trial, she would have a host of conflicts. And it'd be like hiring an assistant And it'd be like hiring an assistant who couldn't do the job because of the conflict now.
That's good news. I do have a motion to approve, do you have a second? Do you have any further discussion? I think this is great, it's good to utilize this statement.
I want to commend Commissioner Parias for pointing out my top drop, top drop errors at lightning speed, and I appreciate that. I wish it would've happened about thirty minutes earlier, but I was in a rush.
You can send anything that you want for him to review at any point if that was happening. That's all right. Everything was clear though. Everything was clear though. Thank you for bringing this to us.
Having said that, permission would be huge, Your Honor.
Uh, yeah, do you have permission, Grant? Do you want to wait till we take the vote?
That's fine, no problem.
It's the confidence of a seasoned courtroom attorney. He already knows, he laid the foundation, he's getting the verdict he's looking for. There's no further discussion, all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception.
Thank you, and I did not make me presumptuous on this. I'm like a cat on a hot tin roof on a corner.
You have a few other things going on right now. Feel lucky in your mediations.
I expect to be hopeless.
May it just result.
Because, you know, when you expect, when you expect nothing, when all, everything is pleasant.
Well, hopefully you brought good magazine.
But I have a great opening, and I wish I could let here, but I really can't. But I just want to see what my department can respond to. Okay, so this is what you're proposing. And but with denying you that, that, that opening, and so the response is, well, sure, it makes it sound bad when you say it like that.
All right, good luck. Thank you, Mike. Moving on, Agenda Item Number Nine, introduction of A&amp;M Medical Students. We have Ms. Roxanne Kosses here this morning. Ms. Roxanne, do you want to come down to the podium and introduce your students?
Good morning, if that's okay.
What can you stand so we can see you?
Good morning. I'm with A&amp;M Rural Health Program, and we have two students rotating for two weeks in Beatty County. And they'll rotate with our, their clinics and at our hospital, and they are Portland and Joshua Town. And they are two students, and if they would like to stand up and come up, that would be great.
Excellent, thank you so much, Ms. Kosses. Is it, are y'all third year medical students or second year?
Going into our second year, yes.
So you're still addressing yourself as mister and not doctor yet.
That is true, yeah, that's true.
Gentlemen, welcome, thank you. Can you tell us a little bit about yourselves? You know, I don't want to pitch on this, but maybe just fifteen to thirty minutes each.
We'll do our best. It's a hard act to follow, Dave, so we, so I'm Josh Towne. I'm a Navy veteran and currently in the Navy, actually. Father of two, and I'm a non-traditional medical student, so kind of changed my career a little bit here, but still ready and eager. So class twenty twenty-seven, so going into the second year. And we're in the Rural Medicine Health Distinction at A&amp;M, which puts us in different rural communities all over, all over Texas, so we're excited to be here.
Excellent.
My name's Corlin Maung. I grew up in Earl setting in West Texas, so I definitely want to do rural medicine, and this is just a great experience, so I thank y'all for hosting me.
Wonderful, thank y'all for being here, and best of luck to in all your future endeavors, and we need more country doctors, so.
Absolutely.
Glad to hear it. Yeah, I think that's a great opportunity. Thank you, Roxanne. Okay, moving on, Agenda Item Number Ten, approved proclamation proclaiming June twenty twenty-four is elder abuse prevention month. It is.
Looked at, proved.
I have a motion, thank you. We should laugh. It is a very serious matter, having been involved in more than one lawsuit related to the use of usually family members by, by, by their younger counterparts to take advantage of either financial whereabouts or other benefits that they perceive. It's good to talk about it, it's good to let, let your parents, let your aunts, your uncles know that there is no shame in talking to somebody else if they're being bullied or if they're being threatened or if they're being coerced into giving money, lending their card, doing any of those things, because I guarantee you, it happens everywhere. It's happening to your neighbors, to your friends, family members. And there's a lot of, a lot of renaissance on the part of our older citizens to share anything. It may be due to embarrassment, to misunderstanding, to, to a, a desire maybe to avoid loneliness. So please, talk with your folks, talk with your family members and friends, and continue to communicate. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception, thank you, gentlemen. Agenda Item Number Eleven, approved guidelines regarding disposition of the body of deceased paupers. Okay. Yeah, is this my agenda item? I don't have any backup information.
I think Candy was just... Candy was wanting to ask questions as to the significance of the study between the...
That's right, thank you. It's always good to get prepared to your own meetings. Okay, so we've had a situation that came up in Naxi recently, and usually when it comes to the burial of paupers, it's, you know, a situation where often times you do have family members or loved ones, but they have no means to, to perform last rites for their, for their loved ones, and so they look to the county. The process in Beatty County, and we need to look at this from a policy perspective, needs to be that those requests come through one of the funeral homes, not from individuals. And that was the issue that we addressed last week. And Candy thought, and I did as well, that it might be good for us all to say that and discuss it, if there are any questions, concerns, anything like that. Go per, there is a background. I don't believe so.
I don't believe there's any policy here, and I don't know what to talk about.
Yeah, and we just want to be able to give the funeral homes clear direction so that they know what the process is, if one of these individuals has...
Because we do have a pauper cemetery that's in Camp Hattan.
We do, and we routinely do this several times a year. I think it's a cremation, there are no, I said last rites, I shouldn't have said that because there are no last rites performed. It is a, it's a burial cemetery only. But I'd entertain if anybody wants to, the will of the Commissioners' Board, if we'd produce some type of policy to writing, so that we can distribute it and publish it. I'd be willing to entertain a motion at that time, at this time.
I'd like the motion that the, that may reform to write up a policy on all the paupers and order that would be set policy committee.
I have a motion, do you have a second? I have a motion and a second. I appreciate this very much, gentlemen. We'll get working on coming up with some names, maybe the next one we have, and next meeting we can formulate that committee before, there's just huge urgency, yes?
Is, can the policy committee look at it, since we have a policy committee already?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be fine, I just didn't want, and I think Commissioner Duitt did, just didn't want to put too much on those.
That was the thing.
Never bizarre.
Committee could be a policy committee, that is part of my motion, because if we have a policy committee, they can do it.
Yeah, and was that your second? Did you understand that, did you have a second?
Yeah.
So I have, so I have a clarifying motion and a second, thank you, Madam Monitor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. That should be a very brief, succinct, there doesn't need to be a lot of meat on the bone. We just want to make sure we get interested folks in the right pipeline.
They presented, they get with the funeral homes, they may have input, it's very, very pertinent.
Candy is the lead of the policy committee.
Give her marching orders, excellent, excellent. Okay, moving on, Agenda Item Number Twelve, Presentation of Local Emergency Planning Committee, LEPC, school recognition by David Cave, Beatty County, LEPC Chairman. Mr. Cave, you have the floor, sir. Please identify yourself once again to the record.
Let me just say, as Chairman of the Beatty County Local Planning Committee or LEPC, David Cave, I would like to thank the county judge and the Beatty County Commissioners for allowing us to come before you to recognize some of the Be, Beville and Beatty County schools as well as the area fire departments for their support and participation in these events, in these efforts. However, for those who are not familiar with the Beatty County LEPC, let me take just a moment to share with you how LEPCs originated in the United States. Emergency Planning and Community Rights Act, EPRA, was passed by Congress in nineteen eighty-six in response to concerns raised by a major industrial accident that occurred in nineteen eighty-four in Bapo, Bopal, India. In that accident, which killed and disabled hundreds of thousands of people, it was found the public was unaware of the hazardous chemicals in use and stored at the facility, and they lacked information on what to do in the event of an accident. Soon after that, a chemical accident at a facility in West Virginia in eighteen, in nineteen eighty-five raised concerns again in the U.S. about local preparedness for chemical emergencies. So the need for EPRA continues today through the oversight of the EPA since nineteen eighty-six. More recent incidents have occurred, such as in twenty thirteen, the West Texas Fertilizer Facility Ammonium Nitrate Explosion that killed fifteen people, where emergency responders and nearby citizens were not informed, or were not well informed of the chemical hazards in their neighborhoods and rural living areas. Under EPRA, the LEPC's main responsibility is to develop an emergency response plan to prepare and protect the community and emergency responders from chemical accidents. EPRA especially states the LEPC's focus or serve as a focus point in the community for information and discussion about hazardous chemical emergency planning and health and environmental risks in their community. Priorities of the LEPC are to ensure first responders and citizens are prepared for accidental chemical release and the increase of public's knowledge of the presence of hazardous chemicals in their towns, communities, and all rural areas of the county. The fire department's role in emergency planning plays a key role in implementing EPRA. Since fire departments are often the first to respond to an emergency, they need to be active in the emergency planning process for the community for responses to schools, businesses, old field areas, and local neighborhoods. Representatives from all organizations in Beatty County play an important role as well in developing the emergency plan and protecting the public during chemical emergencies. And without their participation and support, the LEPC cannot fully comply with EPA's requirements in keeping our community a safe place to work and live. So today, we'd like to recognize the following schools in Beatty County that were willing to meet with us and to bring new safety and response training information to their, to the administrators to better prepare them for a chemical emergency that could cause them to shelter in place, which is sometimes confused with a lockdown, but it's quite different, and/or, and/or special precautions that must be followed if a fire department, instant commander, requires a school to evacuate all personnel immediately due to a rupture in a gas meter, a pipeline, a leaking home LPG tank, an eighteen-wheeler transportation accident, electric car fire, and these are just a few that could impact our area. The certificate today specifically states, "For dedication in completing Phase One of the Beatty County LEPC Awareness Training on Shelter in Place and Evacuation Measures in the Event of a Chemical Accident." I would like the school representatives here today to come up and receive this recognition we called for, we called for aspiring to raise the bar on their emergency response measures to be better prepared to protect their students and staff in the event of a chemical accident near their school. With your continued training, I'm sure it is greatly appreciated by all parents and families knowing their children are in a safe place and well protected as covered in the school emergency plan. I would like to say at this time, we do have a very special guest that I'd like to step up to the podium, Chief Roach, Robert Roach. Chief Roach retired in twenty twenty-three after forty years in the fire service. Eleven of those, he served as Fire Chief with Corpus Christi Fire Department. He also served as a chairperson of the Nuasis County LEPC during his tenure in Corpus Christi. He did not stay retired very long, is now the Chief of Safety and Security for the Education Service Center, Region Two, out of Corpus Christi, which if I'm not mistaken, covers about nine counties in South Texas. If he can have just a moment to come up and say a few words.
Absolutely, welcome.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Judge, County Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here in Beatty County, a place where I've visited many times and have attended many meetings here in my tenure as Fire Chief for the City of Corpus Christi. Now I've changed my role, and now I serve to help the school districts write their emergency operations plans. And I can't tell you how important it is for the local Emergency Planning Committee here in Beatty County to be associated with that, so that everybody's aware of what everybody's plan is supposed to be. And so it gives me great pleasure and great honor to let you know that I've worked with many and all of the school districts here in Beatty County. Everybody's doing a great job. I'm here to help out. The, what's going on is they're doing things that are very required by Texas Education Agency. I'm here to help the school districts with their district vulnerability assessments, their intruder detection audits, and any other issues that they may have when it comes to the writing of the emergency operations plan. I'm here to serve the citizens of Beatty County. Thank you, Judge, thank you, Commissioners, for making me feel welcome here, and it's been my honor and privilege to be here in front of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Knight.
Chief, if you don't mind standing here and you help me hand out the certificates.
Sure.
And Mr. Cave, when, when, as you mean, receives your certificate, why don't we have him go ahead and just walk up and stand behind Sir Rother and go back to his desk?
All right, our first certificate is to Skidmore Tynan ISD, Richard Milhouse Superintendent and Steve Batzler, Director of Operations. Ty Token with the Skidmore Fire Department wasn't able to be here with, for that, but he, the fire departments, and I'm gonna mention them, they were, they were great assistants in being part of this team when we, the LEPC meets with the school districts, because they will be interacting directly, each fire department out there. So Pettis ISD, Ricky DeLeon, Secondary Principal, and Kimberly Aguilar, Facilities Director. And Senator Kissey is Pettis Toledo Fire Department, he wasn't able to make it. Next is Ponte ISD, Raymond Robinson, Director of Innovations and Grants. And Joel Ice is the Fire Chief of Ponte Fire Department. And I don't know if they're here, St. Philip's Episcopal School in Beville, Alan Lentz, he's the school director, that he participated. And then First Baptist Church in Beville, Chuck Nolan is the school director. And last but not least, is St. Mary's at County Bee Turner School, Patty Johnson, Facilities and Safety Director.
Here I was thinking, Miss Johnson was just keeping an eye on us.
Always great to see you, Jeff.
There's always a method behind my madness, so watch out. Before we go up to the group picture, let me just say in closing, it's a great team effort. LEPC is trying to strive to get more involved, and without these, these folks' help, we can't make the community any safer. So we appreciate their help in opening the doors to let us in. But I'd like to encourage any remaining schools that would like to participate in emergency preparedness for chemical, gets into training, please reach out to me. And additional information can be found on the Beatty County website and/or on the Beatty County LEPC Facebook page. And if you want to know more, there's some handouts right over there that we have for adults. One handout is what, what you need to do for shelter in place or evacuation. It's in English and Spanish, and the other one is a colored book that we take to the elementary students, and it's a teaching tool, it's a colored book, and it also leads them through what they need to do at home as well. All right.
Just real quickly, Mr. Cave is, he's got a great team, and he's got a wonderful buy-in from other participants and local community leaders. But he has, aside from his team, he's single-handedly resurrected the Beatty County LEPC, so let's all give him a round of applause.
Chief, let's go up there with the big guys.
Now we can take a slow down. I'm gonna have to stand some back.
Get everybody, take about four, five pictures at least in case.
One, two, three, yeah.
Thank you all once again, thanks for coming, thank you for this important... Yes, sir. They're the only Ponte in the...
The Golden's way to go. Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Oh, really? Yeah.
It's raining, it's raining.
Not a drop. I think it's the Iron Dome.
It slid to the north, huh?
The Iron Dome.
Yeah, I was watching it on the radar. Slid, slid north. Or something else.
We all miss you.
But I do think, yeah, I think the parents should have just worn chockeys. That's a good thing. Okay, moving on, Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Approved Law Enforcement Support Office Application for Participation for the Sheriff's Office. And then we have Chief Deputy Ronnie Jones, uh, present. I'm asking for forgiveness on this one. I signed it on May twenty-ninth. It was a necessity. Went ahead and did it.
Moved approved.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Over. I'm so glad you'll pass that. Been very awkward if you did. Yes, sir. Chief, thank you.
We have a, uh, Chief Deputy, your, your.
Oh, wow, yeah. Well, this is a surprise and a pleasant surprise. Are they in? Yeah, get them in here.
There you go.
Hey, all right. Welcome, everybody. How are y'all doing this morning? Squeeze on in, squeeze on in. We're gonna take a photograph, too, if y'all don't mind, but we all wanna get a, a look at you. How many of you are there?
I think there's twenty.
Twenty?
Twenty-six?
Twenty-six. That's a good number.
Twenty-one out of a hundred and six.
Twenty-one out of a hundred and six. Well, welcome, welcome. Y'all having fun so far?
Yes.
Have they let y'all shoot guns yet?
No.
What?
It's our birthday day.
Oh, Wednesday.
Friday, we're gonna do it.
It should be on Tuesday.
Okay, everybody avoid the Expo Center on Wednesday. Well, that'll be great. What a great opportunity for y'all to learn a little bit more about all the facets of law enforcement, what our Sheriff's Office does for our community. And what a great way for our Sheriff's Office to get to know y'all. Um, this is just a wonderful program. It's an excellent program that B County has been doing. For how, how long now?
Eight years.
Eight years. You are becoming part of a very strong tradition and, and hopefully it'll, uh, add a lot of value, uh, to your young life. Can we take a quick photograph with y'all?
Yes, sir.
That looks like George Washington.
I do?
Yes.
I'll, I'll take that. Thank y'all. Now, hey, Ty, um, we're gonna move the chairs and then we're gonna have y'all come up, okay? All right, everybody up forward. Big smiles.
I see some that can't be seen. Here, we got some that can't be seen.
Who can't be seen?
The little ones you had.
All right, turn around, guys. Hey. All right. Now, guys. Smiley and then serious. Okay, now serious, meanest face possible.
More face, let me see more face.
All right. Thank you, guys. Thanks for coming. What's a new one for me? I don't mind it. I'm gonna have to Google the photo. I never reached those heights. I do. I've got the inserts to prove it. All right. Moving on. Uh, Agenda Item Number Fourteen, Approved Elections Administrator Request to Use Capital Credit Card to Purchase Voting Stickers from Bay Tech Label in Loue of Setting Up an Account. I think this is largely thanks to thank you. I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, motion passes without exception. I'm sorry, I didn't give you an opportunity to give us your spiel, uh, but you can get those I voted. This is for the I voted stickers?
My vote counted, since you were the speaker.
Oh, we're changing it up a little bit. I like that.
Saving three dollars and fifty cents a row. Bye-bye. Love it.
Prudent as ever. Thank you, ma'am. Moving on. Agenda Item Number Fifteen, Presentation of Twenty Twenty-four B County 4-H Scholarship Recipients by Randy Shower. Miss Shower, you have the floor.
Feeling very pregnant today, so sorry. Um, my name is Randy Shower. I am the FCH, uh, Agent for B County and I also have 4-H responsibilities. Um, every year, our council does a scholarship and, um, to our graduating seniors. This year, we had six seniors. Only four of them applied to the scholarship because the other two are not gonna be, they're gonna be doing other, other types of, um, work or something like that. But in between those four kids that did apply, we were able to give away fifty-two-hundred dollars. Um, between the four of them, I think we had over forty-five years of 4-H between all of them. Um, that's a lot of 4-H, a lot of, I think, three of the kids have been in since second grade. So, um, it's really cool to give back to those kids. They've spent a lot of time and efforts and volunteering and community service and anything else you can think of. Um, I call them to come help me and they'll be there to do anything we need. Um, so a lot of that money does come from either donations or fundraising. So the last year, one of our biggest fundraisers was a pecan sale, the yearly pecan sale. Um, I don't, we don't know what we're gonna do this year. We're kinda up in the air. I know, I know. We don't know if we're gonna continue with the pecan sales or not, but, um, whatever we will do, we will make sure that we come to Commissioner's Court and, um, advocate for those kids because a lot of that money does go back to those seniors. Uh, B County is part of a district with eighteen other counties. Out of those eighteen counties, I think only two do a, um, a 4-H Council Scholarship. So we were one of the two and I'm very proud of that. I did not start this. This is something that has been in motion since way before I started, but I would like to keep it going. So, um, just the community's support, support from, uh, fundraising and everything like that would be generally appreciated as we move forward. So that's all I have to say. Oh, and the recipients were Devin Rios, uh, she got fifteen hundred dollars, Samantha Butler, she got fifteen hundred dollars, um, Clara Robsonasky, she got fifteen hundred dollars, and, uh, Larissa Puga, who received seven hundred and fifty dollars. So those four girls, um, are all going to continue their education either at a two-year degree or four-year degree, but they're gonna do great things. So, thanks, y'all.
Thank you so much, Randy Shower. Congratulations to the recipients of those, uh, scholarships this year. Thank you again for all your effort and to keep the 4-H on the forefront of our thoughts. And thank you as well for your committed, uh, your, your committal to continuing to bring, uh, the cause to B County for sale, especially the candy ones. You can care about the fresh ones, but, uh, just candy ones. I prefer eating free bags of them, too, rather than paying.
We're not persons that are concerned. That's why there could be a looking to do it.
Because I eat all of them. I'm not over there every. Okay. Moving on, Agenda Item Number Sixteen, Approved County Wellness Incentive Program and Wellness Sponsor in Designation Form.
Good morning. My name is Carol Patel and I am the Wellness Insultant for the South Territory with Texas Association of Countyists. So I wanted to talk to you all this morning about the new wellness sponsor as well as the county-specific incentive program. So I'd like to start off by introducing the new B County Wellness Sponsor for our Healthy County Program, Randy Shower. Um, just real quickly, the role of a county wellness sponsor is to be a wellness champion, help promote wellness among county employees. She will also support Wellness Coordinator Jaime Casquio in administering the Healthy County Program, helping answer employee questions, and, as well as helping plan any wellness presentations or events. And she has the opportunity to attend our annual Healthy County Boot Camp Conference, which is going to be in January of next year. The, we do reimburse travel and lodging for two, uh, employees per county. So that is a great opportunity to learn more about wellness topics as well as helping program programs and network with other wellness coordinators and sponsors. So just for some next steps, in the renewal paperwork, there will be a sponsoring coordinator designation form that will need to be updated with Randy's contact information and then we'll get her on the email list so she can receive further communication updates. And were there any questions on that?
No, ma'am, I don't think so.
And then I'm now going to move on to the county-specific incentive. So that information is found in the little tattered flyers that I provided. So the county-specific incentive is an optional program that a county can choose to design and implement, and it allows counties to incentivize employees for completing health activities such as annual physicals or fitness challenges. Some of the benefits of implementing a county-specific incentive are that it encourages healthy behavior, helps control future costs, and increase participation in healthy county programs. And it also shows that your county values and rewards healthy behavior. Additionally, it can help encourage annual physical completion. So one of the required activities is an annual physical and we like to encourage our members to get those annual checkups so that they can detect and treat any chronic conditions early on before they become more serious and more costly. So as a preventive approach. And then lastly, the last perk is that B County can earn thirty percent of their eligible amount of employer rewards funds for implementing a county-specific incentive. So this, uh, purple flyer that I provided you, it provides an overview of the employer rewards program. And employer rewards program allows counties to earn funds for participating in different wellness activities such as the county-specific incentive, the Wellness Portal WebMD One, as well as for, uh, hosting a wellness event or presentation. And then counties can use those funds to continue to promote wellness among their employees. For example, they could purchase prizes for a raffle prize drawing or lunches for a lunch and learn or even fitness equipment for an onsite gym. So the structure of a county-specific incentive, I've, uh, included this sample county-specific incentive brochure and just as an abbreviation, I'm going to use the word CSI just to make it easier. So each CSI includes activities and rewards. So in this packet, the sample activity is completing an annual physical and the reward is a PTO date. Now, each CSI must include an annual physical to earn credit toward employer rewards, but counties can add additional activities such as a tobacco affidavit or a fitness component. And the rewards can vary. It really just depends on what your employees value and what would motivate them the most, whether that is a PTO date, gift cards, raffle prize drawings, cash, et cetera. Also, non-grandfather counties can penalize employees who don't complete the activity. That is an option.
Are we non-grandfathered?
Yes.
Okay, how do you penalize?
How do you penalize? Do we them or what?
Oh, no. Um, I think some of them, um, some counties.
It's okay because it's in the form of question.
Oh, my. Oh.
Sorry, Matt Patel, please continue.
Some counties, um, they have like a, like a tobacco contribution, like if someone is a tobacco user, they have to pay extra. And so like if you, they require a tobacco affidavit. So if someone, um, fills it out and they say that they, they have to fill out whether they're a user or a non-user. If they are a user, they would need to complete a certain program, uh, like it's like an online wellness program. Um, I believe if they don't complete it, then they would have to pay that contribution something that will count.
If I could interrupt, sir. I, I'm looking at the date. This started in October of twenty twenty-three.
So this is just an example, um, but yes, they do have an earning period, so.
And ends July thirty-first of this year?
Yes.
So we've got roughly a month and a half?
No, this is just an example.
This is, okay, okay.
So if, if you, if B County were to implement this program, then they could, just for example, like you could start in October of this year and have an earning period up to July thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. So that is the time period in which the employee would have to complete the activity in order to earn the reward. And then as far as next steps and reporting goes, um, so Jaime and I will work together to, uh, create a design. If you have any ideas for activities or rewards, you can reach out to him and we can design the program together. And, uh, if the court decides to approve the CSI, we will work with our wellness platform, WebMD One, on adding the design to the online portal. Additionally, um, employees will receive this sample, or this brochure, but it's specific to B County and it has the rewards and activities outlined as well as instructions on how to complete the activities so that they are aware. And as far as reporting goes, like keeping track of who completed the activities, there are a couple of different options. So for the annual physicals, B County can collect signed annual physical forms from the employees. Or there's an online option, uh, online tracking option. Employees could complete an online attestation form on the WebMD One portal. Um, and the, and we also receive the claims through the, across the shield as just a second confirmation. Um, were there any questions?
I, I don't think so, not, not for you, Mr. Tuck. You've done an excellent job, uh, presenting this test. Were you here last year?
Um, for, to Commissioner's Court?
Yes.
Uh, I didn't present in Commissioner's Court, no.
Um, if I understand where we're at in this process, the, there's a concept and we're looking for approval to work on putting together a plan that will then be brought back to Commissioner's Court to review.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, and then to approve at that time. So today, you're just looking for, uh, guidance. I'm in, and Randy, you're just looking for guidance. Is this something that Commissioner's Court wants them to undertake? Is that fair?
Um, yes, I wanted to also proceed your input as well as, because I know some commissioners, of course, they have ideas on what activities or what rewards they would like to implement, so.
Does anybody have any? I think we were all focusing more on punishments. I'm not gonna spend. That could be, but probably not. You know, maybe of apple juice. Uh, but we do know, well, what, what we can do is depending on, because I'll, I'll call for a motion in a second, but depending on how that goes, any commissioner, uh, can reach out directly to, to Jaime or Randy, uh, after giving it some thought and consideration. And thank you for your excellent presentation this morning.
Oh, thank you all for having me. Appreciate it.
So if there's any member of Commissioner's Court that, uh, feels, uh, feels the urge to make a motion to, uh, direct, uh, Jaime Casquio and Randy Shower to work with Ms. Patel and Tac on putting together a. to work with Ms. Patel and Tac on putting together a proposed county wellness incentive program, I entertain a motion this time.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is there anything, when you're in Randy, that you'd like to say that we can put in a motion or something? Because we're kind of in cloudy country right now.
Um, so this talk got started because Jaime came to me, and I, we're talking, and I have programs that I do in my, in my line of work, the Family Community Health and Healthy South Texas, that can definitely fall hand in hand with the wellness goal that I think both entities have in mind. Lunch and learns are something that I do often, and I can just incorporate them. I don't wanna say get more bang for the buck of like me getting programs done and the county getting programs done, but essentially that's what it would be. And while all the county employees benefit from that, because it is, it is very beneficial to have healthy eating practices and incentives and things like that for the county. And so I think that is the common goal. And just having the, having someone, which would be me and Jaime to have available for questions and concerns. So, and it just falls in line with my line of work, so it would help both parties.
Well, I know, looking at this, one of the advantages, if I go get a physical on the county employee, I get eight hours off. Well, that's gonna impact those departments and those department heads and those elected officials that we make that decision for.
That's just a, they just had that.
Right.
There's an example to do that, yeah.
Right.
But yeah, there are, there are, there are implications.
There certainly are.
And any benefits.
That's not, I don't know much about that side of it. I think you, I think you guys can pick, you all can pick on what incidents you think would be inappropriate.
Judge, I tell you, based upon this, I'd like to make a motion to reauthorize Randy and Jaime to go forward with this and come back to the court with some suggestions and proposals.
I have a motion to have a second. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Thank you for taking on additional duties. Mr. Patel, thank you so much for your time this morning and for your presentation.
Thank you all.
Have a wonderful day.
Thank you for having me. You too.
We'll have drafts in the judge's office, Randy?
Thank you.
Tuesday, tomorrow?
I think by four o'clock, sir.
Perfect, thank you. Move fast. Okay. Agenda item number six, no, agenda item number seventeen. Approved contract for CM Company Auction for B County's recently disposed items. That monitor?
Um, it's housing.
We've used them before.
Yes, we have used them before.
Pretty standard.
They are trying to see if they can bring money back into the county to sell some of the items that are just taken.
What are we selling?
I want to say this was initially is the.
Items from that are old jail that are.
Yes.
Please, I'm afraid.
I was gonna say that.
Nope. Okay. So just surplus stuff that we're not using, that we're not gonna use. Great.
If they've been there for some time, I believe.
Yes.
I have a motion to approve. Commissioner Farias have a second from Commissioner Lenny. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. All right. Agenda item number eighteen. Approved Texas opioid settlement agreements. We have no settlement agreement, so we have nothing, no action on agenda item number eighteen. Agenda item number nineteen. Hurricane Harvey, Texas General Land Office, GLO, Community Development Block Grant, CBG Status of Project, gentlemen?
We got an email that they were gonna send for a couple more.
Yes, there is gonna be an additional request for information coming soon. We have not received that yet. But I believe that is the next step towards approval or whatever is next after that. So it's just additional clarity on some items that we submitted.
This is on the Blanconia timeline. Time is following the same.
All over a year ago.
Excellent. Well, thank you all for your efforts in that regard. Moving on, agenda item number twenty. American Rescue Plan, ARP, Status of Projects, gentlemen? Excellent.
I would like your.
Loving it. Okay, we have no executive, well, I mentioned. Can't recall. We have no executive session items this afternoon, so we'll move on to agenda this morning. So we'll move on to agenda item number twenty-one. Adjournment, do you have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you all for your time and your efforts this morning. I hope everyone has a wonderful, wonderful, and I'll be right.